Okay.
All right, so this is New Orleans. Meeting of our seventeenth. Twenty twenty-three. This afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
I would like to read this to you in the light of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which is anyone's one nation under God. We did this all for the liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call of councillors. Councillor Hearn.
Here.
Councillor Smith. Councillor Wood here. Councillor Ritter. Here. Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Quiner.
Here.
All right. We have. People that have signed up to comments, so we will do a public comments. Public comments will be held two, three minutes each. Now, the keeper of the timer. All right. Naomi Parker. Yeah. Yeah, we need you speaking to the mic so that other people can hear you recording and keep you up.
Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, my name is Naomi Parker. And I live in the city of New Orleans, for twenty-three years. And I think that's not further than wanting to put it inside since nineteen seventy. My parents live here. What I want to talk about tonight is. How many has been spent? In this city? It did the two years. Two, one year ago, it's getting really broke and we have to stay in. It doesn't seem like there's been any cutbacks in spending. I've been talking to people about, I'm not sure what you call it, logo, whatever that is, and most people hate it. And I understand it costs, what, fifty thousand dollars? The city's money? It's not worth it, not worth it. You couldn't do, one of the partners here in town, do something much, much better. There's a lot of complaints about it. And they don't understand why the city did that. And they think that the city shouldn't have, the people vote on what the logo is, not just make them take. The other thing I want to talk about is employees. Some of them. I think it's totally unfair. To take somebody be a supervisor or whatever. After forty some years of working by himself. So all of a sudden, you put him under somebody else who take the streets away from him, and it's this, you're demeaning. And it's disgusting to almost pay a bill in this town. Number one. First of all, the city manager took away his right, his ability to write grants. How many street grants have been written since you took them away? None. Dennis got all these street grants, and he has for years. And he has every, almost every street in this city is paid because of Dennis. Nobody else went out for grants. He supervised the jobs. Northlake Road down here. On the west side. It was always crooked. Until Dennis got a grant to straighten it out. And he supervised so that they had nice corporate sand and everything was up to spex. I, I think it's unfair. And then you put him under somebody that's wastefully a treatment person? How does he know about how to write a grant for a street? They're not. I just don't understand the logic to what is happening in this town. The money has been being spent highly. You know, I finished my sentence.
Finish your sentence.
Wildly, and. It's not helping the citizens of this town. And they have no say in it. They're none.
Thank you. Douglas Lindahl.
My name is Douglas Lindahl. I live at five ten Queens Avenue in Lakeside. I'm here to talk about the promise that you, Cherry Kenzie, made last meeting. That you would have Dennis's problems on the agenda for this meeting. It didn't happen, and I wanted to know why.
I can't see.
Um, this is for a public comment. This is.
That's what it is.
Not created. I'm reading statements. It's. You're, you have time going.
You can get any answers.
So why did they sign it? And not fulfill it? Is it just a big lie?
No. I spoke to a attorney and I was advised not to. There's certain things we cannot discuss in public, and that is personnel issues.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So then why were you discussing with us when we were protesting Dennis's demotion?
I never discussed anything with you out there. So. Okay. So.
Yeah. Yeah, and also the bin of money that we don't have.
Thanks. Sure enough.
So we can valid Lakeside Rider, grateful volunteer. I just want to make the public aware of a couple of events that are coming up. And one is this Thursday at six o'clock behind the library. And there's NASA ambassadors that are coming and giving a presentation on different types of telescopes. All ages are welcome. And they hope next year at the end of summer to make it a double event. And we're hoping that that gets the kids interested in looking at the amazing sky we have above us. And that the fog cooperates that night. Um, on Friday around five thirty. We have a DTV takeover coming to present the donation check to the Lakeside business owners. For all the volunteer hours worked at the date. And it's over two thousand dollars going to that local nonprofit. And the riders are really happy to donate those funds along to another organization. And then again, this year, we have a Lakeside team for the suicide awareness walk at Mingus Park next month on the twenty-third. Um, they're always looking for donations for auction items. And one of the amazing things with our chapter of the AS. American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is that Coos County is one of the few chapters that gets to keep every penny raised. Um, every penny raised at the walk here stays within Coos County. They now have programming where they can come and do presentations for city councils. They can do it according to community. They have programming specific for age groups and grades. For gun owner clubs, for almost every kind of programming imaginable, including new programming. That helps those of us that were affected by suicide. And that's kind of a new aspect they never had before. So we're really excited about that. We're one of the largest fundraisers in the country. And we're not the largest county. Um, and so per capita, last year, we were number one in the country. I invite everyone to come to the walk. There's lots of great veteran outreach at the walk. Um, participate if you can. Um, donate if you can. And let's not be afraid to say the word anymore, suicide sucks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. In twenty, in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, city manager made mention of reorganization of physicians within the public records department. In that reorganization process, the decision was made to move street supervisor position to work directly under the wastewater treatment supervisory. Excuse me. This issue is not an item on our agenda tonight. Because of the potential that private personnel issues may be discussed, which opens the door to possible litigation. As many of you know, there are state laws about employment personnel records being discussed, and we cannot discuss anything personnel related. You can look the law. The reorganization was a lot, was to allow decisions to be made in the field. And to have a more cohesive working environment between the street department and wastewater. The departments operate on many of the same safety and OSHA protocols. Coordination and cooperation can be better obtained from having both departments under one director. In the future, this will allow for projects to be better planned and engineered to meet the needs of both streets and utilities. The reorganization was proposed by the city manager to several councillors. And the reorganization was well received and proved. The public's work director is qualified to take on the additional employee and oversight. The reorganization was shown on the organizational chart in the budget and discussed in the budget message on the personnel section. Of both street and wastewater fund. The council approved the budget seven to zero unanimously. There was no change in duties, no change in pay or title to the street department employee. Now, with that being said. I have received several items of hate messages this week. I've had people tell me that I have no testicles, which I carry in elsewhere. And that I have no spine for letting the city manager run the city. City manager does not run the city. So. That's enough. But the city manager does not run the city. We. Have been going by the charter as much as we possibly can, considering it was created in nineteen seventy-six and it's way outdated. Um. A lot has changed since then. Now that we have computers, printers, uh, wifi, internet, whatever. Including the fact that the city manager and mayor are no longer a E. So it does need to be updated. However, I don't see that being really. A good time to update it. Since too many people can't agree. So with that, we're going to carry on with the meeting. Consent agenda.
Mayor, just before, um, just to let you know and council know and the public know. Uh, item number six, Lakeside business owners, uh, they are, um, they request to be taken off the agenda. They'll, they'll give a presentation at the September meeting. So they will not be here, so you can skip them.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regulations to see in July twenty-seventh, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. City council workshop meeting minutes, July expense payroll reports and monthly update reports from library and planning.
Make the motion that we approve the July. Uh.
Consent agenda.
I set an emotion. You can do it. Okay, motion's been made by councillor Hearn, and seconded by councillor Ritter.
Already wrote.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. There in discussion.
I had a question on one, one item. Looking for here, oh. Um. The automation group, repairs and maintenance. Uh, on page three of the. That way, yeah.
Right, I can show.
Two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. It says repairs and maintenance. I have to just increase to what?
It's wastewater treatment.
That's, that's the fund that came out of.
Yeah. I don't know, sugar.
Yeah, I'll have to, I will pull that and get that out to you. I don't have it off the top of my head. But I can pull it and get it to you guys.
Any more discussion? All right. All in favor? Uh, opposed?
Good, great.
All right. Number seven, approval of Shutter Creek. Agreement, the assignment and the pension agreement.
So, um, Madam Mayor, this is the transfer of the original Shutter Creek IGA agreement from the DOC to Department of State Lands. Um, they have made that transfer, and, um, so now we're transferring the IGA. Um, not ideal. But here we are. The only way financially is going to, uh, hit us is it would have anyway, because Shutter Creek had the option to come before us. Uh, once they closed and asked for a, uh, look at their EDUs and how much use they were using. And they opted to just keep paying their monthly bill. Um, it was my anticipation, and you can see that, um, in my, in my staff report, I anticipated, um, just thinking if I was them and their attorney. I would come ask if I was the Department of State Lands for a look at the EDUs and the use, because they're just going to use it as a research. And probably have, you know, five people up there. Um, sure enough, today, um, late this afternoon at about. Four o'clock, um, I received an email from their attorney asking us to do that. For the future, and they're going to work and see, um, work with us on that. Um, also, in the IG, the original IGA, there was a clause ten, which had to do with a bond payout. And that was if Shutter Creek ever, um, terminated the lease, they would have to pay a bond payout. Based on some infrastructure improvements that were done pretty long ago, I think, but. This is my understanding. Don't hold me to it. I don't know for sure, but, um, I think that, because I can't find those originals, but we do have a bond. And I think I heard from some, I think, Alan, I think somebody else told me that, um. A previous city manager rolled those all into another loan or, or another. Another, because we do pay a loan, but it's a bigger loan now on some other infrastructure, and I haven't dug into that. But that bond payout table wouldn't have no longer been, um, appropriate anyway, and it was up in twenty twenty-seven. So it's kind of, um. It doesn't, it hurt, it's benign. It doesn't hurt us either way that they're not going to honor that. Section ten clause. Um, because I imagine the state's going to stay there for. More than the four years left, or so. Um. This is another good example or, um, reasoning, you know, Shutter Creek was paying quite a bit. Um, I think their, their sewer bill, and I think part of that money was supposed to be helping pay that bond payoff each month. It wasn't like their whole sewer payment was supposed to be, but they were paying, I think about. Um, for a hundred and seventy EDUs. Um, so. Their bill was quite large, um, to the tune of about sixteen thousand dollars a month. Um, they, if we relocate that down to their actual use, that bill's going to go way down. So your, your sewer department is going to see a substantial hit. Um. And then we do still have that bond measure from, I think, that was rolled in with other infrastructure improvements that were done long ago, too. That I think is still at two million dollars, so. Um, and I think we pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year or something on that for the, the path, the, the payment every year. Um. Just so you're aware.
All right, so. You're wanting approval, or are you just signing? The assignment and assumption agreement?
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
Why would we approve the city manager to sign an assignment and assumption agreement for the Shutter Creek system? I had.
Any discussion?
Something.
Yeah, I. I agree. All right, all in favor? All right. All opposed? How much parents? With a approval of contract retrieved strategies to provide campaign services for property tax ballot initiative.
Yeah, so, um, Madam Mayor, I was asked by a councillor to put this back on the agenda, um, for approval. This, um. This is a consultant hired, uh, the council has made it clear you want to go forward with a ballot measure for a property tax. Uh, this consultant would write the, the language, get it approved through the state. They would write up the fact sheets, because as you know, once, um, information gets out there, um, you want to have facts. To help the, the citizens understand what's happening and why it's necessary. Uh, the state has to prove all literature, so it's not, you can't put anything out biased, so, um. If there is misinformation out there floating around, you are able to give facts and give the appropriate response. Um, without that, it's just your word out there on the street. They also will help write the ballot title measure, um, they'll work with the attorney. They'll also give you strategies on how to go out and talk to people and, um. Work the election, um, so that your talking points are, are factual based, that you all are on the same message, same page. Um, once it is through and on the ballot, I can no longer speak towards it. So, um, it will be you carrying this forward as it should be. So, um, this, this consultant was put back on, uh, it's, she charges, I think she reduced it to about a thousand dollars a month, which is reasonable. She won't charge us for time she doesn't use, so it may not be a thousand dollars every month. It's just. That's what she's going to do. I did check around at other election consultants, and I had one get back to me yesterday. Um. Their fee was thirty-four thousand dollars. To help us run the election, so, um, I think you're getting a deal. My other, um. What I will throw out there so you have more information is, we're running into the twenty twenty-four, November twenty twenty-four election season. Uh, these people are gearing up their clients. They're, they're putting, you know, starting to start their clients for elections for the next year and putting them in order and getting, you know, work. And so, um. If, if you want to hold off on this, just know that it may not be easy finding someone later. Again, it's your decision. There may not be work to be done, just because you, you make the decision to hire her now, doesn't mean she's working right away, or that there's going to be a thousand dollar bill to do. I mean, it will start when the process starts, so.
Right.
Oh, and I have, um, one, uh, councillor Smith, who is not here, asked me to read this to you all as part of her discussion topic. As a council, we all decided that a city tax was our number one priority and goal, and we really need to start moving forward. I think tweet strategies would be able to give us valuable information and facts, so we as a council will be able to communicate with the citizens.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to accept, uh. The bid from Rebecca Tweet, Tweet Strategies to represent the city to get the property tax ballot on, uh, on the ballot for next year.
I second.
How's there any discussion?
Is there any guarantee of success or any penalty that we don't have?
Not sure I understand, but you, you, are you talking about, well, of course you can't, nobody can guarantee the success in the election. That's obvious. Um, no, uh, you're, you're spending money. Trying to get a property tax. So, um, you're, you're. And this is, this is help for you to do that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I had talked to you about this before. I, I, I really think that she should come down and at least make a presentation instead of just. Tell us what she's going to do in detail.
Oh, it's.
Where's she from?
Oh, I think she's, yeah, I put her, her, is, her stuff is in your packet about her. Not sure if it's Portland, it might be Portland.
And it looks like New York. Yeah.
Yeah.
Tiger.
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 There you go. She's Tiger.
Where's this money coming from? What fund?
Um, it was budgeted, it was budgeted under, um, contracted services. And it was, it was, um, it would be taken out through contracted services through all funds, because she's helping the city through all the funds. So in contracted services, it would be allocated through each fund to. Percentageed out.
No, I. I think it's a really good idea to gather the facts, but. For, I don't know, just that amount of money, really. Um. It's hard to justify to the citizens. That we're not spending crazily. I think that's a concern, and, um. I don't know what the council can do as far as doing our own political campaigning.
I, 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 um, I know, I can't. Write according and have it approved by the state. I don't have that ability or the training or the experience, so.
You know, the fact that we're getting this to be able to. Combine all the facts and to work with the state agencies that control the elections. And to be able to put it all into a package that we can all. Work with, I think this would be worth the money. Like you said, it's not a given that we're going to be spending that much money every month.
Right.
So does this include brochures printed out?
I think we would do the printing, but they're creating them. Yeah.
Yeah, those, those are some of my questions, and I think, I think. She, she should come down and present this herself, so we have a rock solid answer to this question. Instead of maybe, or I think so.
Well, I notice. Well, I noticed in the schedule one, she does talk about what they, they create the campaign plan, direct voter contact messaging design production stuff, so she does give us.
Right, and I was going to refer you, I was going to refer you to that. She has it in her contract in her schedule.
Thank you. Um, it does have where she's saying direct mail, voter pamphlets, digital communications, all those things are specified in the schedule one, so. Um, although I understand what you're saying about getting her to come down, she's laid it out for us here.
Well, it's wonderful. I mean, it's, it's the wonderful thing she does, you know? You know, it's.
And it would, I mean, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't. Ask her to come to the September meeting.
I, she might zoom in. I don't know that she would drive in, um, if you. I, I could. I could ask her to zoom in for the September meeting, but, um. I think. I think if you do that, then we're getting to the point where you're, you're talking to one contractor. And you're allowing her to come and speak to services, and I don't know that any other contractor would not want to do the same, so I think we need to be very careful. Um, I tried to get bids this, this, more bids this last week, the next one up was, you know, double the amount of money. Um, so. I can ask her to come, but, I mean, without a contractor, without knowing that she's spending her time, I, I don't know that.
I know we're against the.
Yeah, I will ask her. If you, if you want to hold off, I will ask her. And she could, it'd be September fourteenth.
Would you also ask the other one to?
Here.
Yeah.
Then you're getting into a bidding where we are talking to them about finances, and then it gets a little weird for us. That, that's what I'm saying, is it gets a little, like, we didn't do an RFP, we just, I went with somebody who was. At the time, because I didn't know there was actual other people, and she was the only one that was referred. And she was giving us kind of a break. Um, because we got to her early, so I, I, again, I'm not. I don't. This is your decision, regardless of what we all think, you know? So if you would like her to come in September, I will ask her if she will come in September.
That. That would be great.
We table the motion until September.
Yes. September fourteenth. Maybe, yeah, I do see where it does um. She has everything listed. But um, yeah, if she could. Just. I mean, even even if she's in there, that would, at least we would. Be able to talk to her, ask her questions directly to her. Okay. Lakeside District Board and Committee reports. Airport. Senior Manager, no meeting? watershed councillor Bella?
No, no meeting.
Okay. Water District Councillor.
I left my notes on the counter, but. The Water Board uh, met last week and. Everything's going according to their site, they're replacing one pump. Um, they have another pump that's on its last legs, they will be replacing that one with pieces parts to update it, they say it's very good for an antique show. Um, all of the. Step uh, drafts, the one one step were um. Getting uh, ready to be submitted for grants. And. And then in that way, they were all happy with the the new phone system that they have for on-call people.
Thank you. I'm Alex Association councillor, I did not attend, I had surgery, that's. That is correct. Fire District Councillor.
Oh, we had our fire district for meeting last Wednesday and. It was a little abbreviated because the chief was called out on the emergency call and missed the meeting entirely, so we didn't get everything done we wanted to. Uh, we did take delivery of new pickup, uh, used to pull the fireboats, that kind of thing. And uh, we did have one discussion of access to the airports and other city properties. The chief needs keys for his locks. And he said he emailed you, didn't you get that today? And he also said he talked to you several times before, but I I don't know, anyway, that needs to get done, he needs them so he can get in with licenses when there's an emergency like. The uh, lifeline lands at the airport to pick somebody up. That needs to be done, um, I don't have any report from the chief to get on a number of calls or that kind of thing, so maybe more.
Alright, and Lakeside Business owners with this councillor Smith, and I don't know if they had a meeting and I don't believe she was there. Hey, manager, it's for.
Thank you, Mayor, um, just an update real quick on the railroad project, um. We got um. Reimbursed from the county for the ten thousand dollars that they were chipping in. Uh, the state ODOT rails is, um, if you recall, had to redo all the paperwork on it because the original grant. Had the county getting all the money going to them and uh. Somehow down the line, we were doing the work, and so to get the money to go to us, since we were doing the work and putting out the money, um, they had to redo, the state had to redo all their contract and all their paperwork, so they're hoping to get us reimbursed. Um, by the end of September, I believe, um, they're still in their legal and then they'll have it. Reden and I will approve, and so hopefully we'll get our, I believe it's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars reimbursed for the money we put out for that railroad project. The S E A grant, which is the small city allotment grant that cities are allowed to go after, um. If you recall, this this grant project was in default when I came in, so we grabbed that out. Um, we cannot go after any other S E A grants until this one is cured or it's finished and completed, which it is not, and so. Um, once that is done, then we would, but we're going to be past the deadline, so that's why we're not going after any other grants. Um. That, and we knew that was going to be the case, so um, I still have to apply for that grant reimbursement also. And. Update on uh. When was it, Tuesday, uh, we had a number of the uh, state. ATV committee, the state board. Um, the OS, Oregon State Police, Dunes Patrol, oh, do you have their list? I hadn't. Um, the Oregon Parks and Rec was set up by Ian Caldwell, um. ATV committee, ATV Highway Access Committee, uh, us, ODOT, USFS, Coos County Parks, Coos County Sheriff and the Oregon State Police. Uh, we hosted here in Lakeside, they actually stayed in the, at the lodge. For a couple days, we went out on the dunes, uh, we talked about the economic benefit of having ATV access to Lakeside. Um, they talked about the grant program and what they funded. I learned, um, I did not know this, but um, maybe you all did. Their grant funds, um, OSP, State Patrol have ATVs. And they go out in the dunes, um, a lot during the hunting season, which I found fascinating, so I thought it'd be Forest Service or somebody else, but no, it's OSP. Um, we also have Forest Service. Law enforcement, um, that is funded, that are on ATV, so for UTV takeover, for instance, they had all the patrols plus seven. Uh, Forest Service law enforcement that were also out at UTV takeover. So it was really informational, uh, Riley Creek, but not Riley Creek, Riley Ranch, um. Uh, we got to talk to Craig Storm, who you know is the Parks and Rec Director for Coos County, showed um, the grant funding that they've gotten and how they are increasing and. Um, enlarging that um, campground area. And so it was just a good day, um, there is also a state state rep there that was involved and was also with us throughout the day. So a lot of good PR there, and they were very pleasantly surprised and happy about um. Lakeside. Um, in that. While we were there, um, we found out that the Forest Service has those kiosks in all their parking areas. For ATV use. And they're rebranding and redoing all their signage. And so I made contact with their sign person and um, they have agreed to collaborate with us or hopefully give us all their new signage that they're going to use on their campgrounds that we can put on our kiosk. So our kiosk will be compatible with their kiosk and say the same information and have the same um, signs. And so um, we're going to work together on that, so that will be good, so our kiosk will have signage and it will have compatible signage with the state Forest Service spray TV use. So excited about that. Um. We have, if you've noticed and drove drove by the property on Eighth Street, um, we have been making those repairs that you have approved. As far as the windows are being put in, uh, and the paint is being painted, I think it was almost done today. Um, one of the issue we had was somebody tried to kick in the door. Um, and ruin the door, the front door, we don't know if they were looking for tools or a place to stay, not sure, but um. We bought a new door, so that will be under um, building maintenance, and so there's a new door with new keys and a deadbolt, which we should do anyway, because the keys were the previous owners anyway, and we only got one set. So. Um, just to let you know that um, there's that, so there'll be an additional bill that will come before you for the door, and then also um, when they were putting in the windows, there was some additional dry rot. That they uncovered and had to fix, and so that will be before you too. Um. Think that's all.
Thank you. Alright. Council comments, councillor.
Had a grand time on Tuesday, no city money was spent, he is my ATV and we. I took Melissa and we're the mayor and manager out with the uh, the group. And it was a fun ride, nobody got lost. And we learned that. Uh, Oregon's Parks and Recreation and a couple of the other um, committees are looking at Lakeside as a jumping off ground for other cities to be approved for ATV use. They're looking at uh, on up, uh, working with ODOT to get highway access crossing it, so the. People on one side of the, like the sand, sand city. What can can go ahead and and go across a highway to to do that. Very interesting, it's it's amazing how many cops are out there and you don't know that they're cops because their ATVs look like everybody else's until they're right there. So they they are staging that, um, they did mention the deal that they heard. That one of the Dune Patrol officers had pulled over a DUI and they're going, oh, no, until they found out it was in a personal. Highway vehicle and not a ATV.
In Lakeside.
In Lakeside. So the the Dune Patrol is is looking at more than just ATVs, they're they're looking at everybody. Today, um, the manager and I went to the small business meeting in Port Orford. Um, where we met with um, all the others, um. Small cities uh, up and down the coast, uh, Gold Beach. Port Orford, Coos Bay, Bandon, um, one of the ones. Uh, very information, they were talking about um, the what has gone on through the legislation. They asked for a lot of money because they have a one point seven billion.
One fall. One point nine.
One point nine billion, and they figured that the state of Cal, of Oregon can spend some of that, um, we got some. That was scheduled for the small cities, but not as much as they wanted. Um, they're going through. A new homeless. Bill, um, trying to figure out what's they can do. With that, but that's statewide and and it's not really trickling down to the small cities, it's mainly in the big cities. Um, we also met Mayor Crawford P. Carr. She's with the state of Oregon, she representing a COTC, we invited her to come to Lakeside. Um, she was very um, looking forward to to working with the small cities on the coast. And then we came um. That her name Becky Jaeger, she's with two one one. Um, which is a. Quickest way for connect with resources, if you have a a problem that want food, housing, childcare, utilities, healthcare and more, they have thirty nine thousand different agencies that are willing to help you. They just need to just dial two one one and and ask them. Ask, ask them for help and they'll find out how to get it to you. And that's all I got, and no, no city money was spent on the small business meeting today either.
Well, I wasn't quite as involved as you this this month, but um. I did want to see about us figuring out what we're gonna do is that property will lead straight now that the repairs are done. We should have a workshop or a discussion about that, you and us are kind of chatting about putting something out there. Figuring out the game transport, so we can get rid of it out. Um. But other than that, thank you for everyone who came. Yeah.
Just wanted to thank everybody tonight for coming.
It's important that your voice be heard, it really is.
It is indeed. I just want to say we have a city charter. If we need to change it, that has to be a vote of the people, not the city manager. Um, so. And appreciate everybody being here tonight. We work for the city of Lakeside, we're individual over at it, which is true.
Alright. I would like to thank everybody for coming and people for comment. Thank you Shirley for the information that you share out there. And Facebook land. And on what the city is doing and. I really want to thank you guys for your support. And regardless of what people do, we we do. We do represent the citizens of Lakeside, we, it's pretty. Pretty difficult. For people to believe that because. Everybody will agree, which, that's great, that's how it should be, if everybody agreed it'd be the most boring place on earth. But we do support it. Um. I personally do. And I. Will stop there, but I did go to the Oregon Mayors Association Conference in Hood River last week. Um, I got a scholarship to go, so they paid for my hotel, they paid for the trip, they paid for my food, they did it all, didn't cost the city anything. Um. It was very informative, some things I learned that. I had no idea, um, it's nice to talk to other mayors and find out that their cities are going through the same thing we are. I kind of felt good that I knew we weren't the only ones struggling, um. But. The support from other mayors. Was a real boost, so um. Someday I'll. I'll write a report on what all we learned and discussed, there are different breakout sessions and financials as well. So um. With that being said, just thank you guys. Uh, you don't have to like me, but just don't throw things at me. Um. I do thank you guys for coming and commenting and putting in your two cents or your three minutes. So, and thank you guys for everything, all you councillors, thank you for everything you do and for your support. For each other. And.
Excuse me, you have a motion still on the table.
I think it was the, you made a motion for the Tweety. And then you decided to table it without doing another motion and withdrawing your motion.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to table the Tweety.
Well, so withdraw, withdraw your motion.
Draw, yes, the motion on the table about. And make a motion to table it until we can contact Ms. Tweety to see if she can give us some sort of. Further information on her.
We.
Her bit.
Understand. Mayor, you you. You are in control of the meeting.
That's right, I am, so. Alright. So do we, is there any more discussion on that, I mean, are we, we've withdrawn, tabled it? Alright.
Well, who, we do have to do a from a motion to table, so councillor Ritter, councillor Ritter moved to table, who's gonna second? You would, you nodded to withdraw your second, so I'm taking that as a follow, which is a one.
So now that's been withdrawn.
It's all withdrawn, council, you've moved to table, councillor Wood has moved to second to table, now you call for the question.
Alright, end of discussion.
You know, it's really disconcerting to all of us up here, right?
That's enough, we can't have the the. If you all want to talk, you can um. Leave the room or discuss whatever, but this is, this is an official meeting, it's not, they're just coming and saying whatever they want, okay, so we're not gonna do that. So with that being said, um. All approved?
I am.
Oppose? Motion carried, it'll be tabled and it means.